Much allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. So we need to move to 2.0, which is the seating of the new board member. So Mr. Douglas, you have an oath that you'll have and can complete that. So Dr. Webb?
Yep.
Thank you, Acting Chair Monahan. Mr. Douglas, if you could raise your right hand, I know you have the oath in front of you. Like to administer the oath of office to Mr. Douglas, Director Position Number Three. And Mr. Douglas, if you could, in light of the format here, just recite the oath of office, and then I have a statement at the very end.
Of course. I, Matthew Douglas, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities and duties of the office of the School Board of Directors of St. Helen's School District in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon, and the policies of said district to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Subscribe and sworn to me before this body on the fifteenth day of January 2025, State of Oregon, County of Columbia. Congratulations, Director Douglas.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And you are officially a board member. So we appreciate your service. We will move to number three, Agenda Approval.
I moved.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And now we'll move to 4.0 Consent Agenda. Board on an individual basis prior to the meeting has reviewed all material. All financial reports are available for review by the public and the business office. The board considers consent agenda items routine business and will be enacted by the board in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items at the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board staff or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. 4.1 Accept Resignation of Acting Superintendent is on the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we will move on to New Business, 5.1. So before we begin, I'm going to read a bit of a recap on where we got to and the next steps. So on November 15th, 2024, the board authorized temporary suspension of policy CBB recruitment and appointment of the superintendent. This was due to the placing the superintendent on adven leave. The board authorized me to seek out and negotiate with potential candidates to present to the board for approval. The district can only be run with a superintendent in place, and due to the urgent nature of finding and placing an alternative, this was a necessary step advised with legal guidance. On November 25th, 2024, the board was presented with a candidate, Dr. Steve Webb, after I completed my search. He was then voted on and approved to take on the acting superintendent role. On January 14th, 2025, Dr. Webb provided notice that he was resigning from the acting position on 1/31/25, which leads us to tonight. We will now have the opportunity to use policy CBB in an expedited manner in order to ensure the district has the next required acting superintendent in place on February 3rd, 2025. Until a final decision is made with a current superintendent, this is a necessary step. Furthermore, involved steps will be followed through with if and when a permanent opening is available. Currently, Human Capital Enterprises has offered to provide consultation pro bono for the expedited acting superintendent role, which will also allow the board to take public comment on the desired qualifications and characteristics of the next acting superintendent. With that said, I would like to introduce Dr. Kathleen Roden-Nord, who will provide more information regarding the next steps. Welcome, Doctor.
Thank you so much, and it's an honor to be here with you all tonight, and the firm is incredibly honored to be able to serve your district and your community at this challenging time. So what I'd like to do this evening is walk you through our suggested timeline. I'd like to briefly review the activities that we'll be supporting you with and also the dates for those activities. Before doing that, if I could have Dr. Webb or whomever share that expedited search timeline that we provided, then I will walk through that. While that's happening, I'll just say a little bit about myself. I retired in 2021 after serving 18 years as superintendent of the Junction City School District down in Lane County. I have been part of COSA, the Coalition of Oregon School Administrators Superintendent Support Team for the first three years after I retired. And I have been working with Human Capital Enterprises since early 2020, doing search work for districts all over the Pacific Northwest and actually also on the East Coast, serving a client in Vermont these days as well. So as I said, we're honored to be able to be of service to you and just want to convey the seriousness with which we are taking this responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That. So I'm hoping we can get that acting superintendent expedited search timeline shared.
He's working on that, Dr. Nord.
He is, okay. Well, I will, oh, there we go. And perhaps if you're able to make that just a little bit bigger, Dr. Webb, that would be really appreciated. I've got my reading glasses on and I have my own copy, but I'm sure others might need to see it a little enlarged.
There's a little zoom slider bar on the lower right corner.
Technical expertise. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Okay, so let's begin at the beginning, and the first activity is the one we are undertaking together this evening, and that is our planning meeting. And so in addition to talking through the activities that we'll be engaging in and specifying the dates when those things will happen, the discussion will also include the board's consideration of the recommendation that Human Capital Enterprises has made regarding the salary range for your next acting superintendent. So that will be just a little bit later in our inner work together this evening. So once we conclude the meeting tonight, we will prepare the posting and be ready to get the vacancy announcement out with the help of your district staff. We will be advertising the position on COSA's job search site. It is very, it's a very powerful platform, I suppose, where a lot of people who are looking for leadership positions in Oregon refer to that. So we expect that it's going to get a lot of views, and we'll get right to work getting that posted. Once it's posted on January 16th tomorrow, we're going to have a very short recruitment window. And our president, Hank Harris, President of Human Capital Enterprises, will be responsible for the recruitment part of the process. He will get the application portal open, and he will start collecting applications. That application period is going to close on January 22nd. At that time, Dr. Webb will be available to help facilitate the board through a discussion of the acting superintendent qualities, excuse me, qualifications and characteristics that will be informed by the public comment that you will be receiving this evening and any further public comment that you will be collecting from your patrons and staff and so forth via whatever mechanism will be set up to do that. I'm imagining that there'll be a process by which people can submit email comments regarding desired qualifications and characteristics as well. We're going to move quickly. You know, it's, you all have an interest in having your acting superintendent in place by early February, and so we are going to be working quickly to close the application, start the screening process, look at those desired qualifications and characteristics as part of the screening. And then we also will be conducting telephone reference checks. We have two members of our firm. Dr. Erin Prince was the superintendent in Corvallis before she exited to become superintendent in South Kitsap, Washington. She's now retired and has been working with the firm for quite some time. So she will, with the assistance of Christie Perry, retired superintendent of Salem Kaiser Public Schools, be conducting those telephone reference checks. There also will need to be a comprehensive background check that is undertaken as you consider the finalists for this position. That will need to be done by a third party. And at the district's expense, I know that Dr. Webb and Hank Harris will be conferring with you to help help navigate that step in this expedited process. Finally, the board will meet an executive session on January 29th, and that will be for the purpose of conducting interviews with the identified applicants, those that you wish most to hear from. The board will also have an opportunity to access materials related to those applicant submissions, and also will be privy to transcripts from those telephone reference checks that I just mentioned. At that time, it's possible that following those interviews and having had deliberation about the interviews and your reactions to those applicants, you may elect to come into open session and take action to announce the person that you would be entering into negotiations with for your acting superintendent position. And as I said, the start date is driving this expedited process because you'd like to have someone in place by February 3rd. So we're all going to be working hard towards that end and feel like we are going to have a great, robust, quick system to get you what you need in a timely fashion. So any questions at this point about the process, any of the activities or the timeline I've just shared?
Okay, so I just had a, that actually looks like a very expedited schedule. Like, I'm used to talking to people who happen to have experience in HR, and that's actually incredibly fast. Is that actually a reasonable timeline, or do we have a buffer of understanding just in case the inevitable problems end up cropping up?
So we believe that, you know, while this is a very ambitious timeline, it's also very doable. We've got the plan well-established. Everybody understands their role in executing it. We believe that once we make that announcement of the vacancy tomorrow, there are people that are preparing to receive that announcement, and we expect that we will have some applicants for you all to consider. So we can, we can do this, and you know, if for some reason we get to January 29th and, and for whatever reason, there isn't a determination the board is ready to make, then, you know, I suppose you all will have to revisit what your options are, but I'm optimistic.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the public and the listening audience, would you actually describe a couple of those other options?
Hmm. In terms of should you not land on a finalist at that point?
Right.
Yeah, well, I suppose you would consider extending the timeline, perhaps contracting with a firm. As you know, our firm is taking this on at no charge, just in the interest of service to you all. So I don't know that, I can't speak for the firm to say that there's an ability for us to stay engaged beyond that point. But we certainly would help you, you know, explore options if that became necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The governor did tell us that if we don't fill the job ourselves, she'll fill it for us within five days. So she may still hold to that. Then we have no say whatsoever. We just get whoever she picks, and that's that. So and this is not necessarily for a permanent position. This person could certainly apply for the permanent position, but this is so that we can keep the doors open. And it's like hiring a substitute teacher. I needed to keep the class going. If nobody shows up, it's not real good for the classroom. So and again, in this situation, we need somebody that's qualified to be in that position, even if it's short term.
Yes, and it is an acting superintendent position, and perhaps now would be a good time to transition to the next document that we entered for your consideration this evening. And Dr. Webb, that's the document that is entitled Contract Term and Salary Range Recommendation, if you're able to share that.
Steve, can you pull that up in screen share, please?
It's a short recommendation, but it does speak to the fact that the desired contract term is February 1 through June 30th of this year. And this is an acting superintendent position. This is not a regular or regular position or anticipated to continue beyond that date. So upon recommendation regarding the resignation and contract termination notice, you'll see that the recommendation allows for 10 days of written notice by either party. And that, I think, will afford you, you know, the most flexibility should the need arise for you to terminate the contract or for your chosen candidate to do that as well. With respect to the monthly salary range, you'll see that the recommendation is $18,000 to $20,000 a month, and that is based upon the compensation being provided to your current acting superintendent, which is $18,000 plus a little bit more, just so that you have room to negotiate if it's necessary to do that, to attract the candidate that you're looking for. You may find that, given kind of the urgent nature of this, that someone from out of the area would need some additional support for housing, for example, or moving expenses temporarily. So that is what our recommendation is based upon. I think at this point, I'd like to turn it back to Acting Chair Monahan, and if you would like to see if there's any discussion about this recommendation, typically boards arrive at sort of a consensus for consensus support.
Thank you. So does anybody have any comments related to the terms or the salary range?
One of the things I do, just one thing, just for clarification, often if we were hiring a permanent person, it would include multiple benefits, health and otherwise, and this tends not, is not doing that. This is just strictly an open salary for that time. And whatever benefits they currently are living with, they'll continue to live with. And so this is, this is kind of a salary and benefits package, but they pay for their own benefits. Am I correct in that?
Thanks for that clarification. Yes, the suggestion is that this is a salary that is inclusive of, you know, they could use some of that compensation to purchase benefits or or for travel allowance, or, as I said, to go to help their housing costs and so on. And these things are subject to negotiation once you land on a final candidate, but that is the range that we're recommending.
We go ahead and remove the share. Okay, thank you. All right. And one of the things I have had heartburn over the salary for a while, I do understand it, especially in emergency situation. But we have had qualified individuals within our district the whole time and not knowing different circumstances. We did choose to do an outside hire. However, I feel like it would be appropriate to consider an internal hire right now. Would that change the amount of salary that we would offer?
So it's, the position will be posted and open to all comers, and ultimately, it will be the board's decision as to who they want to advance for approval to be hired into the position. And these things are subject to negotiation. So this is a, this is a recommendation. It's not a it's not a promise or it's not a contract. It's just saying this is likely what we think you would need to to offer in order to attract qualified candidates. So, and it's, I'm sure it's entirely possible, maybe there will be people who are who are available and interested in taking the position and meet your needs. And as I said, those things could certainly be subject to negotiation between the board and the candidate.
So in your experience, if we did have an internal candidate that applied, that is already receiving benefits, could we offer something much less, maybe $15,000?
You know, I'm going to defer to your legal counsel and your and board leadership. That's typically who engages with a candidate around contract negotiations. But those things are, you know, it's negotiations, as I said, it's not.
My thought would be that this would be inclusive of their salary and benefits. So if they are currently getting benefits, then, and they want to maintain those benefits, their salary would be such that the total amount did not exceed the same as we would pay somebody from the outside, and it wouldn't be less. Their salary would be commensurate with this. The salary benefits and all of their, what we call full expenses or yeah, yeah. So that, that's just like for a teacher's full expenses is different than a teacher's salary.
Yeah. And I would like to just clarify that this is not something the board has to take action on tonight. We just want to get a general sense for what you're comfortable with, for lack of a better term, so that we can convey that to prospective applicants. And, you know, your applicants will understand that ultimately it's subject to negotiation.
Could we at least widen it then? I'd like to maybe even start it at $14,000. So 14 to 20, if we had that huge range, and it would be understood that it would be negotiated.
Now, oftentimes, these things are presented as a range. I'm going to defer. It's not my, you know, I would think that Acting Chair Monahan, maybe you want to query the rest of the board about that?
Yeah, Mr. Douglas has his hand raised, so let's let Mr. Douglas go.
Well, I was just, I would actually like to go ahead, Kelly, and finish up on yours, and I'll go ahead and ask afterwards.
No, I was, I was good. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm honestly fine with any, like, as long as they meet the qualifications that are listed, you know, doctorate preferred, master's degree required with a major work in educational administration, have at least five years administrative experience suitable for the position, and hold a valid Oregon superintendent's license. Yeah, I mean, if we have somebody that's internal that does end up making those qualifications, I'm perfectly fine with being able to end up doing in-house.
Might just label it as a total compensation. So if we're going to, if we stayed with, we can figure out a range later, but if we're going to do that, say the total compensation, so that would include if somebody's in-house or external, that would be the total compensation package.
Yes, thank you. I, that's important to just reinforce that the recommendation is for a total compensation package. I think the recommendation says salary, but that's, there wouldn't be benefits or anything added to that.
It's just a total package.
Correct.
Melody, do you have any feedback? So as the last time I was solely involved in this process, with some guidance through outside support through COSA and some other items. To Mr. Douglas's point, the qualifications are pretty steep as far as like that full side of that goes. And so finding people that fit that very narrow scope of that may require that level of compensation for the temporary step, especially given the circumstances. Kelly, I understand your point about broadening the scope of that particular conversation, but I can tell you in what I was dealing with, it was complicated to try and get a narrower scope. My position in general is that salary should be tied to years of experience and qualifications. And so with this particular setup, I suspect we're looking for somebody that's very experienced in navigating some of these things that may very well fit all of the qualifications that we're looking for. But I don't know that we would be able to drop it too much for the temporary acting role, given the circumstances.
Permanent role is a different story. We have a salary schedule for the permanent role.
Right, and we are in the middle of a school session, so in general, we're going to find people that are retired or contracting and doing other things. So that is my hope, is that we definitely find a good candidate, but I also know that we have individuals that are qualified, that are local, and we could stick to more of a local range rather than statewide or national range.
If you can get in contact with them, please do.
Well, yeah, it'll be up to them to go ahead and apply.
And that's also why we're very grateful for Human Capital Enterprises to step in and do this pro bono. I spent about 80 hours trying to work on this when the last time this happened, it was rather unprecedented. And because of the nature of the requirement of having a superintendent in place, it is important to make sure that they're allowed to get their processes done, and will take a significant load off of us and make sure that they can do all of the things that I was trying to do individually, which was a lot. So I really appreciate you stepping in and assisting us in this matter.
Our pleasure.
And to that end, if I may add, thank you very much, Steve, for the help that you ended up giving me and trying to be able to end up getting onboarded in this particular method. It is very much appreciated. You ended up going above and beyond in order to be able to help trying to be able to get me situated so that we can end up working together, and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you.
Pleasure, my pleasure.
Any further comment on this particular section?
Actually, I think I would go ahead and like to make my statement to Steve now too, because then we'll be opening it up to everybody. Would you mind if I said thank you to him as well?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank him for his guidance, and I appreciated your professionalism and your prompt responses always, and the clear and direct communication that you've had with the board. And I wish you and your family well as you head back into retirement yourself.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to move us to six point O if we're ready. Okay, so we're gonna move to six point O, visitors to address the board. This is a time for public comment regarding desired qualifications and characteristics of the next acting superintendent. The board will only hear comments tonight on this topic. If you have further comments, we'll need to take them on another meeting. Comments regarding other topics can be made at the board's next regular business meeting on January twenty second, twenty twenty five. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per individual, five minutes if you're representing a group of patrons. This portion of the meeting will not exceed sixty minutes. Please note, personnel concerns will not be discussed in a public meeting. If you have any concerns with school district personnel, please schedule a meeting with the superintendent. So to that end, Ed, if you can begin to parse through our commenters and give them their opportunity.
Sure, we currently have, excuse me, three hands raised right now. First one was, I believe, Ally Harrell, so I'll go and allow to speak. The function I'll be here, hold on.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Ally, we can hear you.
Hey.
Hi, I just wanted to give a shout out real quick to Steve before he leaves. He he had a big big impact on me. And I I listened to you as a parent who has two boys at the high school. And I listened to you as a teacher as well, and I just wanted to say thank you. It means a lot. What you have done and you've accomplished a lot, and it was an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell. Were there characteristics that you wanted to uplift regarding that comment?
Um, you know, he said he got the call when he was on vacation and that he was. He didn't really have to think about it and his his dedication and accountability. And you could really tell when he was talking how it was his calling to do this. And I I really appreciate that. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe the next person is Ms. Sharp.
Um, my, I would like to thank Mr. Webb as well for being a transparent for the community. I am a student at Summit High School, St. Helens High School, and Virtual Academy. So I'm a concerned student for everything. My only question is, will the next acting superintendent will be a transparent as Dr. Webb was?
So this is a time for comments on what you'd like to see in the next superintendent. So transparency is a characteristic that we are putting on there that we are wanting to see. Do you have any other characteristics or qualifications that you would like to have?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harrell.
Okay, next is Rochelle Russell.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just, I guess I have more of a question for the board. On your determination of the hiring. I guess I'm wondering if you guys could help the community feel. Comfortable with you guys choosing the next superintendent when there's been so much faith lost. In the system and how, I know that was something Steve Webb was supposed to, you know, kind of. Do is, you know, really bring us around to where we can all work together again. And I just would like to know how you can help us feel comfortable. And choosing in your choosing of the next or superintendent when so much faith has been lost.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. So for tonight, we're taking comment on characteristics and qualifications for the superintendent. Any of those questions will be discussed at the next meeting that we have when we're presented with the information. So what we're looking for tonight is specific things that you think the district needs in an acting superintendent. So that can be the primary focus of the search.
Okay, so let me rephrase that then. What will you be asking or looking? Well, I guess that's not gonna work. Okay, so will will there be a time that you're gonna answer? Questions in the form of how you choose, if you're not willing to tonight. And we only have till February third.
So the important thing for us right now is to take the information that we're given by the public, which is why we're opening this up so that we can hear the characteristics. And then those should be the guiding principles as we move forward, listening to what the expectations are. So it's really important for us to hear the specific characteristics that you're looking for. So that that can be the primary focus of anything that we're doing in the future.
I'm really. And if I may end up adding as well, like, sometimes it doesn't have to be something as very specific as. They have to have a bachelor or master's degree or something like that, like. Sometimes just genuine characteristics that you'd like to be able to see in someone that you genuinely want to trust. Like the the sort of qualities that you would have just from a personality. Those are also very relevant and very valid in the kind of things that we are looking for. We aren't just looking for, well, do they end up having the skill sets? Like, they they're going to be candidates for skill sets. What we're looking for is also like the kind of personality that. You would feel comfortable with, the kind of person that you're really searching for. And if you can, please do get those to us, please.
Well, I appreciate that. I just want to point out that you did respond to the first person. That spoke to Steve Webb and didn't address her in the way you did me just now. So you allowed that comment, but but not mine. And so I guess that feels a little a little jaded, but you know, it's okay. I think what I asked was fair, and I think those characteristics come from you guys of who gets hired and put in. When that is on your backs and and Kelly, I see you nodding your head in agreeance. Like, it's you guys that we need to trust to be able to bring in a good superintendent. It's not necessarily the characteristics that I wish to see. Because we all know what characteristics we choose. We want someone who's honest, who's forthright, who is is not afraid of standing up for what's right. And to push back on things that aren't aren't right. But what it really does come down to is who is in charge of the hiring, and that's you guys. And so Trinity, I I think that was kind of a double edged sword that I'm getting put in my place for asking the wrong. Form of question, yet the first question was taken with no no argument at all, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
If I may say, I I do think that Ally offered just some gratitude. But I I don't disagree with what you're saying, Ms. Russell. And I also would ask that you. Do trust this process. Through the process, Chair Monahan was able to get Webb on board, Dr. Webb on board. And we have been appreciative of his time. And from what I've heard in the community, everyone has felt like he has been very professional and trustworthy. And kind, and hopefully, that would be the same sort of individual that we would find and be looking for. But if there's any other type of characteristic, much like the ones you have said. Those would be ones that we just want to make sure that people are are saying. If it's someone they really want to talk to and they want them to be friendly, or maybe they want them to have an open door. Policy, or maybe they want them to be very strict and very professional and make sure they go through those steps. Like, there are different ways that a superintendent or any teacher or anybody can act. And we as a community, you as a community, should be able to have your say, and you're getting the opportunity right now.
It's been my experience that. When we go for a permanent solution, it's very different than an expedited hire to get somebody that's qualified. We need somebody that's there that can just get the job done. And so we don't have quite the selection pool that we would have if we're doing a national search for a person. At a permanent position. In the past, when we've gone for a permanent position, we had teachers, community members, and board members. On a on a rather diverse team of folks that went out, went visiting. Visited their former districts, did a lot of work to gather in the information to hire the next superintendent. And so that's a different story than an expedited hire. Because we need somebody here between now and the end of the year to help us continue running a business. And then that also gives us the time to go through a process. Of of actually looking for a permanent hire. So this is not a permanent hire. This is. It could be, but it'd be one that, like everybody else, whoever we get here, if they want the permanent job, would be applying for the permanent job when it comes up. But right now, this is an acting superintendent position, and we need somebody that can have the legal authority to do that. Very different from permanent hire. So in in answer to your question about how we hire, in this case, that's the job we've been hired, given. And that eventually, even in the permanent one, that it's our vote or who's ever on the board vote at that time. They make the final decision, but we get a lot of input and public input and interviews and. Public meetings and going to the various service organizations. And and so when we've hired in the past, it's been a rather extended process.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody, tonight's meeting is for us to listen to the community's characteristics and requests. And that's why we have invited people to provide that public comment in that vein. The other discussions will take place in another meeting as we go through. I hear what you're saying, Ms. Russell, and I appreciate that. But our intent in this is to be able to listen to the community and hear those specific characteristics. And through that, provide that trust or faith that you're looking for in following those components that you're saying. So I've heard transparency, openness, compassion, and some of those tasks. So those are the the comments that we are looking for tonight relative to this.
Well, and I just want you to know that I do appreciate that, and you essentially did just answer that. And it was just a simple question that I do appreciate you eventually answering, and I hope you can understand. As a community, why would we? We would want to hear that from you. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your feedback.
Okay, next is Logan Gilbert Renner.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
If we can, thank you. Hello, I'm Logan Gilbert Renner. I'm Secretary for OSEA Chapter Thirty One. And Instructionalist Educational Assistant at McBride Elementary. I didn't really converse with too many of my union members, so I kind of speak with myself for myself for what I want out of a superintendent here. But it has some vibes from what we talked about at our last member meeting too. So we seek a super, well, I seek a superintendent who values collaboration, respects classified staff. And supports unions through transparent communication and shared decision making to foster equitable working conditions. And a positive school environment. That's all.
Next is Ashley Welker.
Go ahead, Ms. Welker.
Hi. So can you can hear me?
We can.
If you can, thank you.
Great. So I think that honesty, being truthful and transparent in all of the dealings across all schools. Consistency, aligning like actions with who they are, their values and who they are, principles of who. And like what they stand for. I think active listening, like truly really hearing and understanding the concerns and perspectives. Of the people in the district, including parents, staff, and of course, the kids. I think compassion, demonstrating genuine care and concern for the well being of student, staff, and the community as well at large. Responsibility, owning the decisions and outcomes, whether positive or negative. Reliability, being dependable and following through on commitments when they say they're gonna be somewhere. Or they say that they're gonna do it, like Dr. Webb has shown us that can be done. Forward thinking, setting a clear and compelling vision for the district's future. Kind of like how Dr. Webb came in, he said, this is what's gonna be happening, and then following through with that. So and inspirational, like motivating the people around you. Like, I think her name is Ms. Russell. She said that, like, the community has lost faith. But if we have someone coming in that's motivating the community, motivating the staff, motivating the parents, motivating the students. To work towards shared goals, team oriented, encouraging input from all the schools. Inclusive, valuing diverse viewpoints and fostering a culture of inclusion and clarity. Openness. And consistency, making sure that applying rules and policies to everyone. So like, no one is out from that, like, everyone has that same policy, like, the policy reads as it is. We've already, like, it's, it is what it is. And the superintendent is to hold to that, right? Flexibility, being open to change and new ideas from the staff, parents, and especially the students, like this, these are their schools. And resilience, being, by resilience, I mean, like, remaining. Steady and like composed, especially like in these face of challenges and the things that are going on. Especially because like that we still have victims and things like that. And being able to make sure that the superintendent, like Dr. Webb, has made that boundary line and telling the community, no, that's the. You know, like, this is what it is. And it's it's okay for the that some people just don't know. And it's not your business until it is. And being, having a superintendent come in and actually do that and hold the same ground, if that makes sense.
Hey, I think I got all of that. Excellent. Now, that was very, very informative. Thank you. Like, that that is exactly what we're looking for, being able to end up getting all of the qualities. Even if they don't like, even if it seems like it's just a thing to add, no, all of these things are incredibly important. The forward thinkingness, the being able to motivate staff and students and administration. Being able to make sure that they are open, that they don't, that they aren't particular. On where they end up applying to the rules for one person as opposed to another person, when it really should be everyone that it equally applies to. And yeah, especially the active listening. I I have learned more from the things just in the last week alone. From being able to do active listening and being able to actually dig into things to be able to see past just. The first statements, to be able to end up knowing more, a more inclusive way of being able to do it. So thank you very, very much for your help.
Given our timeline, we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to go from the community. So any comments or anything we can say to the end.
Okay, next up is Melissa Howard.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I was just a couple of things. I have a sixteen year old at the high school, so I asked him what he thought. His answers were honest, determined, hard worker, and willing to seek input from high school kids. And listen. And I guess as a parent and a staff member, I would just love good, clear communication. Even if the communication you you can't give what people are seeking, say that instead of just, you know, potentially ignoring. And willing to seek input from staff. I think many of our staff are community members, but many more are not. And so sometimes they don't have the same opportunities to attend community sessions or things like that. So having, seeking input from staff, we sometimes, you know, see things from a different place. And that's it. And just thank you, Dr. Webb, for stepping in. And that's it. And just thank you, Dr. Webb, for stepping in and for what you did while you were here.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
All right, next up is Ashley Christner.
Hi. So after listening to the response that Rochelle received, I realized that everything I had prepared for this evening would not be allowed. Which is unfortunate. Because I recognize that while we have a finite amount of time this evening. How can I frame this in a way that will fit the, the rules that we, we just learned of? I guess I want a superintendent that is not avoidant. Somebody who is willing to take the input of the community. Even if it isn't framed exactly as they would like. I really think it's important that we do kind of recognize that the community was led to believe that Dr. Webb would be here for a minimum of 90 days. And I, I won't speak for the entire community, but I certainly thought that acting superintendent implied that he would be here until we can move to, transition to more permanent leadership. And while we abruptly realized that that wasn't going to be the case. We did have a couple of months with Dr. Webb and Dr. Webb, I do appreciate some of the things that you've done while you're here, the listening sessions being one of them. Having that said, we had a couple of months to provide input on this. If only the community had known that Dr. Webb would only be, be with us for a short period of time. We had five different listening sessions for parent input. And we had the opportunity to communicate this and address it in those sessions and privately in emails or anything else. But given the abrupt notice and because we only have amount of time here, it, it doesn't seem that respectfully, well, let me put this differently. It feels avoidant. It feels avoidant of so many questions and concerns that the community has related to the transition to yet another temporary superintendent. And it, it doesn't feel like a fair opportunity for the community to address those concerns to, to be here and list out a list of positive attributes. And to Rochelle's point again, I think we all have a, a general understanding of what we'd like. We'd like safe schools. We'd like transparency in our leadership and we'd like a fair opportunity to communicate our concerns. I'll just leave it there for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Christner.
Okay, next and the last hand is Jennifer Gilbert.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess characteristics I would like to see in a new superintendent is one that's not chosen by any one of you on this board. Second characteristic I would like to see is a superintendent appointed by the governor. This is a temporary position, as you've all reiterated tonight, especially Bill Amos. So I think in order to foster trust and transparency back to the community, it would be best if the governor chose the new interim superintendent. And I just wanted to say you all need to resign. Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert? Ed, do we have any more?
We do not.
Okay, we'll leave it open for just a minute, given our virtual setting. So maybe another minute and see if anybody else wishes to weigh in on the characteristics.
Hey, just one thing I was thinking of, this is Rochelle, and I was unmuted, so I assume I was invited to speak. I really want someone who can also support not just students, but staff. And who they feel like there is an open door policy that they are not stopped before they reach that door and that they are heard and that they are supported. And I believe that a superintendent needs to support the admin that are in those schools. But not only just the admin, I think that if you have a large group screaming about the admin that are teachers, that they will be heard as well. And that teachers can be placed with the respect and regard that they deserve as well. And I, I just haven't heard that said enough. And I just want to make sure that that is something that a superintendent brings in, that they're not just working with admin, but truly out there trying to understand teachers and, and what they're dealing with in the world they are working in and provide the support that they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
My apologies on that. I double clicked. So I was speaking into a dead mic. So we have one more hand. Stephanie Crowell.
Go ahead, Ms. Crowell.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to stress that we, I believe that we just need somebody that will take the time with the community and the students and the teachers and focus more on us than the school board itself, because ultimately we do need trust and you guys have completely lost it. I don't think you'll ever get it back. I believe that Mr. Webb did an amazing job. He actually made people feel like their voices mattered. And I think we really need somebody that's going to care more about the community, the students and the schools, more than caring about those people sitting up there on that board. Because they are, in fact, what has created all of this. And we just need trust again. And I don't feel we're going to get that as long as you people are on that board. And I just want a safe place for our kids to learn again. And I feel like Mr. Webb had started that in the right direction, but by no means do I feel that you guys should have a say in who is going to protect our children because you have ultimately failed our children. So I definitely feel adamant on you not getting a say in who gets to be our superintendent for the safety of our children. This is important and you have haven't even bothered to apologize. And we do not trust you and we want, we want change. That means you guys got to go. We need a new board. And we need somebody that's going to care like Mr. Webb, that's willing to take the time to actually talk to the parents, talk to the students and care about the community, the schools and the teachers and actually care and follow through. And we just need trust again, which will never, ever happen as long as you guys are there. You guys have blew it. Thank you.
There are several more. Want to go to the next one?
Yes, please.
Ashley Christner.
So before we get started, and while Ms. Russell did go again, and we have time, I just want to make sure that if other people are putting their hands up, we want to make sure people's voices who haven't been heard yet also get a chance. So we'll go with Ms. Christner, but if there's anybody that's already talked, we want to make sure that we provide opportunities for anybody that has not.
Hi, this actually is not Ashley Christner. This is Sarah Young. I have a student who attends St. Helen's High School. I would like in the next superintendent, somebody that can explain to the community about why the school board between the years 2019 to 2020, so 2022 to 2023 was paid out by both the general fund and special revenues, a total of
Ms. Christner, we're looking for characteristics for the next superintendent.
Oh, no, I would like a fiscally responsible superintendent. Because comparatively, the Scapus School District, they paid out $505,361. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is Sarah Young. This is not Ashley Christner. Yeah. And when I broke those numbers down, they have the same amount of schools in both districts. But Scapus does have only 79% of the students. So adjusted per board member per year, because they have seven board members versus our five. Each board member only costs their school district $18,049.
Ms. Young.
Compared to an adjusted, we pay $48,473 per year per board member and a large amount of that is because of the legal fees and liability.
We call it point of order.
That we need.
Point of order. Yeah. Ms. Young, we're here for the comments related to the characteristics and qualifications. That's what we're here to talk about. That's what we need to hear. If you would like to comment on that, we can unmute you and allow you to continue. Otherwise, we'll move to the next one. Ed, can you unmute Ms. Young for one moment and allow her an opportunity to talk about the characteristics?
Yeah, there she goes.
Okay.
Hi, no, that is all that I had to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, next Kathleen Garcia.
Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just had a couple of thoughts on hiring either an interim or permanent superintendent. Just, you know, if at all possible, don't rush in. Make a very informed decision, I think is important here, not to just get someone to warm the seat. We need the right person. And I think that taking two or three weeks to find somebody seems like a big ask. And I'm not sure if you know, anybody under those circumstances could be successful in filling a position, let alone this very important position in the school district. As far as the qualifications, I think that in addition to having a very solid educational background, somebody also, and I know these are a lot of things and it's a big ask. But in a perfect world, somebody that has perhaps a legal background or at least can navigate legal, you know, the legal system and laws. Somebody that knows how to deal with policies on the board level and the school level, potentially on the state and federal level. You know, that's a big ask. Somebody also that is familiar with finance and budgeting. And another thing that I feel that is important is to get somebody in that has a proven track record of being successful, of coming out of a successful situation. Meaning that there was no controversy surrounding their past employer or their past school district. If we're going to get somebody that has experience in education. So I'm just going to go ahead and assume it's going to be somebody that's been a teacher or a superintendent somewhere. Somebody that has a clean slate, so to speak, you know, and I don't know exactly what that would look like. And those are all of the comments that I have on it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Zachary Dorn. Apologies, I butchered your name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, this is a venturine. My husband was watching on his phone, so I just jumped on real quick. I too am not okay with the board selecting the next superintendent. I too am asking that the entire board resigns still. I am not interested in them moving the community forward. I'm not interested in them finding a replacement. I'm certainly not interested in them hiring somebody they already have in mind. Wow. No thanks, Kelly. Yes, I, and I stand with a lot of what's been said tonight by Ashne Krishna. I applaud Sarah Young. And I am absolutely just waiting for that resignation from all of you. It would just be super. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dorn.
Next is Carmen Dunn.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to share that some of the things that I would like to see in the hiring process and when you guys are speaking to potential candidates is accountability. So I want to see somebody who's going to keep everybody on the board accountable in their actions and keep staff accountable, keep themselves accountable. And also keep the community accountable, accountable. I think that's important to have somebody who's going to stand up for what's right. So I think that's really important. The other thing that I think is important to bring up that hasn't been brought up yet tonight is that this person is coming in after Dr. Webb, which Dr. Webb was tasked with doing the the corrective action plan. And so that's going to be coming out this week. And so I think it's really important that we have someone who comes in who is willing to put kind of any of their, is willing to take that corrective action plan and run with it, because there was a lot of thought that got put into that. And I think it's really important that someone's going to pick that up and move forward with it and not have to redo that whole process. So I think having some kind of clean handoff of that and someone who's really willing to pick up somebody else's work is important. Sometimes there's people who are resistant to picking up somebody else's work and taking that forward and moving it forward. So I think that will be really important. Those are things I'd like to see. I would like to see somebody who is very action oriented. I really appreciated Dr. Webb and the the timelines that we received. So we would get updates. I'm not on Facebook, so I don't see any of the junk going on on Facebook. But on Parent Square and the press releases that would go out, I appreciated that those were all actionable, that there was something that was going to be done by a certain date. So I would like to see someone who's going to take that same approach so that they can be held accountable by the community, whether or not they're hitting those, those marks. And yeah, I think that's, that's the main things I wanted to bring up tonight. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorn.
Thank you. The next person is Carrie Stewart.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, thank you, guys. I am speaking tonight as both a St. Helen's parent to a high schooler and an early childhood education, as well as a St. Helen's staff member. Some characteristics, I would love our super superintendent to have our compassion and empathy for teachers, students and our community's history, safety for students and staff really at the forefront. To be present in our schools and in our classrooms and at our community events. I think a background and education as well as policy is really vital. And lastly, I truly hope that this person is knowledgeable in the content areas that our district and our teachers have worked really hard on in the last couple of years, such as Avid RTI Letters Training or Focus and Knowledge of the Science of Reading. And just as well as initiatives and strategic planning that we have been working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand up, Lydia Daniel.
Hi there. I am a parent of two high school students, as well as I work in the community and have grown up in this community. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Webb for stepping up in a crisis mode and being very task-oriented and actionable with what he said would happen, as well as what we were told by the board and the community. we were told by the board and the community. The things I'm looking for are transparency. So, um, even if it's a task or, um, action that can't be completed, just letting it be known. So not any empty promises. Longevity, I know this is a potential temporary bill. But also, you know, our community has been pretty shaken, so shaken, excuse me, but you know, something that we have to look forward to, to be able to continue to go to that person and be proud to call them our own. Um, seeing them in the community as well as like in the public eye, it's been great, just the very short term that we've had the interim principal at the high school as well as Dr. Webb to see them in the community, see them at sporting events, just the smiles on their face and know who they are. Um, I think that's huge, being such a rural community. And I think that that should continue. Listening to the kids and the staff, um, you know, that's our main focus right now is the kids. The staff need to be there for our kids. So and really holding people accountable for their actions. So I, you know, we've gone through so much, but also if your job is not being done, you need, it needs to be, you know, taken care of. So, um, I just think it's really important to continue the task and action orientation that's been happening as well. So again, thank you so much, Dr. Webb, for what you have done. And, um, I hope we find the next best candidate.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel.
We have one more hand up, a repeat speaker.
Whatever hour, we can take it. As long as it's within the line of characteristics and qualities. If it's not, then we won't take the comment. So go ahead, Ms. Kroll.
Hi, um, actually, my name is Polly Hilton. Um, I'm, I'm with, present with Ms. Kroll. And, um, I have a, I'm a longstanding resident of St. Helens. Um, and a previous student class of nineteen ninety, yay. Anyways, um, what I'm looking for for my student that is present in yours.
I can't.
She's not muted.
Is transparent, accountable across the board, actionable. Gives us prompt updates, continuous communication on across the board. Not just with students and staff and parents, but also with the community. Someone that's educated on policy and follows appropriate policies and procedures. Makes the students and staff feel safe, makes the students, staff, parents feel heard. That's what I want for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for all our hand raisers.
Okay, so we have a very exhaustive list of characteristics. Uh, those will be put together and will be part of the next steps so that we can utilize them in any interview questions or any, uh, further efforts at finding the next acting superintendent. And I want to say thank you to all of the commenters. We do appreciate the feedback. This is where we get to build some of those conversations and directives from the community relevant to the next steps that we take. And then otherwise, I believe that we have seven point O upcoming meeting input. So following this meeting, there'll be an executive session. And then we have our January twenty-second regular board meeting at six thirty. Uh, in regards to that, um, we have the Northwest DSD Local Service Plan. We will finalize, uh, our actual board operating, uh, components by electing a board chair and or a board vice chair. Um, I do want to put into words today that I really, really don't like virtual. And when there are concerns in the community that rise to the level of threats or safety concerns, we have to move to this particular venue. And next week, I'd really like to go back in person if at all possible. But we cannot do that if there are concerns about safety related to threats or things that put the citizens at risk, that put students that attend our meetings at risk or that put any member of the board or staff at risk. So it is our intention and hope that we can move back to an in-person meeting on Ju- January twenty-second. Um, but we have to take, um, these actions when other issues arise. Any other feedback from the board? Uh, Dr. Webb?
Yes, before we adjourn, I think it appropriate that we announce the purpose of the executive session. And it's pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two E, which allows the board to conduct deliberations to negotiate real property transactions. There will be no action to follow.
Thank you for that clarification. Kelly?
I was, uh, curious if we wanted to do an OSBA new board member training or orientation. Uh, we could do that online at a separate meeting, or we could do it within our next meeting. And I'd also like to ask for our high school update. It's time to look at our freshman on track and our senior graduation numbers and, uh, see what they're doing, uh, planning and current implementation of anything that they have to get them across the finish line. Yeah, I don't, we could really bombard the next schedule and I won't. So there's other things that I feel like we should be talking about, but those are most pressing.
I'm more than willing to be able to end up having additional sessions to be able to get me up to speed because there's I learned a insane amount of stuff about how everything ends up working just with what we ended up doing yesterday. What, once again, thank you, Dr. Webb. Um, and so any, any additional information would be grateful. Absolutely. Any other feedback for the upcoming sessions? For the upcoming sessions, no. Uh, but I would like to be able to do, um, do one particular quick session. There have been some people that have spoken today, um, and have given us great feedback that we can end up using in order to be able to pick a board member. And believe me, I am very grateful for that. Because it, it doesn't mean no good and does us no good as a board if we don't have an understanding of what the community really needs. You know, we can make assumptions, but we, that's part of the purpose of what we have here. But at the same time, there have been some commenters that have ended up needing to talk about other things. And as such, I I have my email available for the school. And I encourage you, uh, those of you who have issues continuing in order to be able to end up talking about those things, I urge you to end up emailing me at that email address available, uh, to be able to end up helping to clear the air in the interim. Because while this board meeting was absolutely essential to be able to get community input, there are other things that do need to be communicated to us. And I'd like to be able to keep that channel open as much as possible. Thank you. Okay, uh, with all that said, uh, we can adjourn this meeting. And then, uh, once we get into the other meeting, we can start the executive session. Thank you, everybody, for participating. We appreciate your feedback.